We're on.
Good evening, welcome to the April 20th, 2020 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. We are meeting again tonight by video conference, as has been our custom here over the last few weeks. This is a pretty, pretty full agenda. We've got the city council meeting tonight and Stillwater Utilities Authority and CETA as well. So I will go ahead and call this meeting to order and we will jump right in to the consent docket. On the consent docket tonight, we have regular meeting minutes, we have some acceptance of some easements and a quarterly report from the Sherrar History Museum at the Sherrar Center. Counselors, questions, comments, or motions on the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket except for item D.
Second.
So that's a request to remove item D from the consent docket?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll remove item D, that's all right, just wanted to make sure we're on the same page. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket minus item D. Teresa, can you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jalowski?
I think she might have, might be having some trouble logging in, so at this point, that vote is approved with a vote of four to zero. And we will jump to public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. I don't think we have anybody signed up for that, is that correct?
No.
Then we'll go to items removed from consent. Counselors Zanotti, item D.
Yes, I always, once again, when the Sherrar Museum or any of them do their quarterly reports and put them on the consent docket, I like to pull it off and just do some highlights. It's hard to believe that in January, we hosted the Love Your Stillwater with the Vibrant Community in Prince Tudor and had a great turnout. And now here we are a few months later and I can't imagine more vital to our vibrancy of our community. So they were only open January, February, and just a little bit of March. But Amelia Chamberlain did a good job of kind of letting us know. They are still planning on hopefully moving forward with some events happening in July and continuing on. And so they continue to plan even though they are, they are closed. I did want to point out or ask what we need to do about the request for funding that they did in their, in their letter to us. Is that something that we normally do when they do this type of reporting? Or is this considered an annual budget type deal? Melissa, I didn't know if that was something you might be able to answer?
It's an annual budget item and I believe we are in discussion with Sherrar as to how we're going to proceed with that funding.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselors. Do you have a motion on the item?
Approve item D off the consent docket.
Waiting for a second.
I believe Vice Mayor seconded that, but was on mute.
On mute. Well, we've got a motion from Counselor Zanotti and a second from the Vice Mayor to approve item D from the consent docket. Teresa, can you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jalowski, if she's logged in or not, okay.
With a vote of four to zero, that item is approved. That will drop us down to item five, public hearings. On public hearing tonight is, is our received public comment regarding the proposed operating budget for the city of Stillwater for fiscal year 2122. Norman and Melissa, you have comments here? You're on mute. You're still on mute.
Yeah, I forget the technology, forget to do that. So we presented at last week's meeting, a lot of information about the budget. Nothing in particular has changed since then. We have been trying to get numbers from OTC. To date, we've been unsuccessful in doing that. We may get some partial numbers in the next few days. But our recommendation to the council is to hold the public hearing and approve the budget as presented. And it will be highly modified as we go through the next few months and journey on to find out what our revenue is actually going to be. As a recap, we've taken some fairly significant actions in terms of reducing spending. And we will continue to do that until we have a better idea of our revenue. I did see one encouraging note from an OSU article today that estimated the GDP down at 21%. Hopefully, that's the floor. If that's the floor, we'll be able to pretty handily weather that, but I think only time will tell.
Melissa, anything you want to add at this point on the budget discussion?
No, we're just going to stay in close contact with the Tax Commission. Today was the deadline for filing for the March transactions. And then we will get that apportionment the first week in May. So I'm just going to stay in contact with them and, and try and feed you as up-to-date, real-time information as they can give us and provide to us. But as Norman said, everything hinges on how this revenue starts to shake out for us.
So just so everyone's clear, I mean, what we're talking about here is adopting, potentially adopting a budget that we know is not going to reflect our actual revenues and there are going to be cuts required in the, in the expenditure part of this, this budget. But given the unknowns around exactly how much that revenue is going to be changed, we're going to adopt as-is and make those changes as we, as we figure them out.
Mary, if I may, in the interest of full disclosure, the city attorney, John Dorman, sent me today some language that is being considered. The state legislature that would allow for municipalities to turn in a sixth month, six-month budget, if you will, which could be modified. We read the proposed language and frankly, don't see an advantage in that process. In that, by the time that we needed to present that six-month budget, we may not have any more information than what we have now, or it may not be particularly accurate. So we have looked at that in the event that council is aware of that potential legislation. And we think that the course of action that we've set, set out for council is as good as any.
Okay. Can you, either Norman or Melissa, just remind everyone of the sort of the process from here on out after the public hearing with the next step? And how do we proceed from here?
So the next step will be on the May 18th meeting. And that's when we will present the resolutions on, for each one of the three municipal trusts and for the general fund. For you to adopt that budget by resolution. That then gives Christie Cluck and her team a good six weeks to check, check numbers, get them loaded into the software so that we're ready to go July 1 when we begin our new year.
Okay. Just to double check, Norman, there's no one signed up to speak at this public hearing?
No, sir, there is not.
Well, I will, I will open the public hearing. I missed my gavel. I need a gavel here or something, but that's the only time I use it.
There you go.
And then I will, at this point, close the public hearing, given that there's no one signed up to speak. Counselors, any comments or questions at this point on the budget? Do we need a motion to move it forward, or is it just a direction of staff?
I think just the fact that we will bring it back to you on the 18th for adoption is sufficient.
Okay. All right, well, with no further issues to discuss on that, we can move down to the next item on the agenda.
Mayor, if you'll excuse, if you'll excuse me for just one moment, I'm going to take care of a technical issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
I was going to ask it between now and May 18th, if citizens actually have questions about the budget, could they call the counselors or the city?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would recommend staff, Melissa, Paul, me, Christie Cluck. And I think we can answer their questions.
Okay. Yep, so if people do have questions or comments or want to know, I mean, like I said, when we start to see what our actual revenues might look like going forward, we will certainly get that information out to folks. But anyone with questions about the, the budget at this point should certainly get in touch with staff and make sure you get those answered. Okay, that takes us to item six on the agenda under general orders. First up, we have item eight, Lakeside Golf Course Annual Report. Mr. Henderson?
Okay, am I off mute? Perfect, okay. Brad's coached me through how to share my screen here, so bear with me as I go through it. Visible for everybody?
Yep.
Perfect. Well, I believe I know most everybody here, but there are some new faces. My name is Michael Henderson. I'm the owner of Henderson Golf Management. Henderson Golf Management was a company I started in Stillwater five years ago and is an Oklahoma limited liability company and family owned. And we employed over 100 individuals last year in 2019 while operating facilities in both Stillwater and Edmund. Our past client list includes golf courses in Perry, Cushing, Tulsa, Broken Arrow, Norman, and Dallas. Our company goal is to assist owners in achieving their desired financial results through the following services of golf cart, golf course ownership, total facility management, monthly course management, agronomy plan development, facility renovations, business plan development, and just as-needed consulting services. There we go. Our programming last year, we had a lot of stuff going on. We had extensive junior golf programming, including the Lakeside Junior Golf Academy. We fielded multiple PGA Junior League teams. We hosted the South Central PGA Junior Golf Championship. And we are still one of the home courses to the Stillwater Public Schools golf teams. Lakeside is also unique in the fact that it's a PGA family course, which is a designation that I think there's only four courses in Oklahoma that carry. And basically, it's a course that's designed and set up to accommodate junior levels of all, all age abilities and physical restraints and that sort of thing. We also annually conduct the Stillwater Men's City Championship, the Women's City Championship, and the Stillwater Junior Golf Championship. All of our clinics, camps, and personal golf instruction are performed by PGA golf professionals and are designed for all genders, abilities, and ages. We're also the home site of the Oklahoma Special Olympics Golf Tournament and the home facility of the Stillwater Women's Golf Association. We have weekly scrambles and other events throughout the year to increase participation in course usage. Last year, we hosted approximately 30 events, which were fundraisers. And golf tournaments annually include the United Way, the SBCA, the Greenskeepers Association of America, OSU alumni events, OSU fraternal organizations. We hosted the High School Regional Championship. And we also held a professional South Central PGA event last year in conjunction with the Golf Channel as well. And we've also hosted several high school fundraisers. Majority of the planned events for 2020 have been postponed until further notice until the COVID-19 safety precautions have been lifted. And gatherings of 50 or more people may congregate together, so we've pushed everything back for, right now, we've got everything pushed back through June. And we're just going to wait and see what happens with, with everything that's going on in the world right now. Future and capital investments we have in the golf course to this point. Sorry, I'm not keeping up with my slideshow here. Over the past few years, Henderson Golf has funded over half a million dollars in capital investment, including the following: 60-unit golf cart fleet, beverage cart purchase, driving range golf cart and picker, and maintenance equipment purchase package, including motors, vehicles, tractors, and other specialized equipment that need to, that's needed to operate an 18-hole facility. Golf course irrigation heads, valves, pipe, and other parts to maintain the irrigation system. And then our annual chemical and fertilizer bill is quite large and as well. Future investment for this year, we're going to purchase 60 new golf carts by the end of the year. And we'll also start replacing other vehicles that are starting to age out after they hit their useful lifespan. Program attendance for 2019, 2018, and 2020 are both here. This right here demonstrates basically our, our green fees. I'm sorry, this is our, this is our paid green fees. Please disregard the dollar amount on the vertical access to the left. That should just be numbers and not, not dollar signs. Paid non-member rounds grew 12% from 17,410 in 2018 to 19,423 in 2019, despite losing majority of our late May, early June rounds due to the intense rain and flooding that was declared a FEMA disaster. Adding in golf instruction program participants, practice facility usage, high school usage, the facility annually hosts over 25,000 golfers annually. Paid rounds have increased 18% in the first quarter over 2019 due to the mild winter and reduction in green free pricing. We started a new program this year that we reduced all of our green fees substantially. We reduced our season pass, passes as well. And it was in conjunction with the good weather, we've seen about a 17% jump, and we hope that's going to continue throughout the year. Our revenue to expenses, total revenue for the facility in 2018 was $617,755, which generated a gross profit of $535,000 and 532. This was offset by operational expenses of $514,000, which generated a net income of $20,875. 2019 saw a total revenue increase to $639,384, which generated a gross profit of $576,753. This was offset by operational expenses of $589,136, which generated a net loss of approximately $12,382. This was due to some new equipment purchases that we brought in that knocked, that raised our operational expenses over the years. With the conjunction with the increased play for 2020, our revenues have also jumped 17% in the first quarter over 2019. And we're looking to maintain this pace throughout the rest of the year. We will continue to match expenditure revenue for long-term sustainability and to keep the operation going. Now, this all is based on this COVID virus clearing out at some point. We can host the events, special events that we make up a huge part of our budget throughout this year. So while our annual play has increased because of the limited entertainment opportunities for the citizens of Stillwater, our major events, we're pushing them all back, and so hopefully we'll get them all in, and the weather, we won't have like we did last year in May and June with the torrential rain and flooding. As I said, for the sustainability of the golf course, we're going to continue to match increases, I mean, with the revenue to offset expenses. And to make sure we keep that in line, so we don't take on too much debt that we can't handle. And make sure that we are in a good position to continue operating the facility for the next few years, if possible. And that concludes my report. Does anybody have some questions?
Thank you. Counselors, questions?
I have a question. Michael, when you talk about your large group programs, are you talking about 100 people in general, in general? Or 50 people or 500 people?
The maximum size we can accommodate is about 120 comfortably. And that, with 120 people, without us bringing in extra golf carts, which, when we start bringing in the extra equipment, it drives, it drives down our, our profit for the day. But also, we can only fit so many people on the golf course, and so we like to make it an enjoyable experience for everybody when they're out there. And so we try to limit it to under 100 players. Most of our events fall within about 30 to 60 players. A couple of the bigger fraternity events, they have the, coming in from, those are our largest events where they will sell those out. And majority of those are scheduled in May, so we're going to push most of those back. In relation to, obviously, the Special Olympics is already canceled. The United Way, I think, is not going to happen again this year. And so, and so we're kind of just holding our breath to see what's going to, what's going, how it's going to adapt.
Thank you.
Michael, with, if those events don't happen, or they, you know, if they have to end up getting pushed, you know, out of even a couple more months, is the offsetting, I mean, I guess your, your expenses don't really go down that much, right? Without those, even when you don't have those events, you're still keeping up the course and all that sort of thing. What is the, what do the offsets look like for you if you don't have those events?
Well, there are some expenses we can control, some we can't. And, you know, the weather plays a big role in that as well, as far as the maintenance of the golf course, how fast the grass is growing, water usage, electrical, electrical consumption. And then whether just people are going to come out and play or not because of the weather is accommodating to them. At this point, with everything that's going on, like I said, we've had a lot of play come out. We reduced our rates almost by 40%. And so we're, we're, we're flat in that sense that, right now, our regular play is making up for the deficit that we've kind of incurred because of the loss of events so far. And hopefully, that trend's going to continue with, you know, I'm hoping that with the limited entertainment opportunities, I'm not sure when everything else is going to open back up. We've had a lot of new customers come out and hopefully, we've snagged a few that they're going to stay and continue to use the property.
Can you tell us a little bit about your precautions that you're taking right now?
Sure. Well, I had it here a second. It's fine. So what we did, we started off, we just keep kind of ramping it up a little bit. So right now, we have rings in the bottom of the cup that do not allow the ball to go all the way down, so you can remove the ball from the hole without touching the flagstick. We're leaving all the flagsticks in. We've removed all rakes. And any, all the water jugs have been removed from the golf course as well. We're only allowing one person per cart while they're going out, unless they are living together. And we don't have a bunch of that, but, but yeah, we're allowing only less than 10 people into the building at one time. Each cart is getting sterilized before it goes out, getting sterilized once it comes back in, and getting completely wiped down. All pencils, ball washers, sand bottles, everything else is being removed. Anything that's just integral to the operation of the golf course, we're keeping on site. But we're just making sure it's getting sanitized and, and cleaned on a regular basis after each customer.
Okay. Counselors, any further questions on the annual report? We certainly appreciate the work that you're doing out there, Michael, and, you know, overall with the golf course and currently with, with trying to keep things open while still maintaining all of the, the necessary social distancing sorts of guidelines. So we, we do appreciate all that work.
Well, I appreciate you guys letting us keep the course open because we like to keep this, like I said, there's a great mental health and exercise place for everybody to come out. The social distancing outside is a great, golf's a great place to do that. And so, and so it's been, we've been fortunate that we've been one of the facilities that have been able to stay open. I know Oklahoma City and Edmund have closed down. My facility in Edmund that I own has, has stayed open. And we haven't had many issues with the social distancing here or at Stillwater as of, as of yet. But we have marshals out on the course and we have employees going around just to make sure that we are doing the best we can to keep everybody apart.
All right, anything further on this item, counselors? Again, thanks for being here, Michael. We'll drop down to item B here, approve renewal of the contract for services with Henderson Golf Course for the operation of Lakeside Golf Course. Mr. McLennan?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. As you're aware, we, in 2017, solicited for proposals and Henderson Golf was selected to operate Lakeside Golf Course. There is a $120,000 a year fee for that service that we pay Henderson Golf. And that is about $30,000 cheaper in a, in a normal year than we were losing on the golf course when we were operating it. This is a one-year contract renewal with two-year, two subsequent options to renew again. And the alternatives are to do not, do not renew, which would, one, require the city to take over operation and maintenance of the golf course. We no longer have the equipment to do that, so we'd have to acquire that. We also no longer have staff to do that. We could also solicit proposals again, which time is a bit short for that, but it could be done. And then another alternative that's always available to you is selling the golf course. Michael can attest to this, and I think he would agree with me, that golf courses are not highly sought after on the market at this point in time. So at this point, we recommend a motion to renew the contract with Henderson Golf and continue operating Lakeside as we have for the past three years.
Thank you, John. Counselors, questions for John McLennan? I'd like to just make sure, John, you know, within this contract, and maybe this is a, a question for Mr. Dorman as well. But if, you know, over the course of this fiscal year, revenues are such that we can't abide or, you know, can't, can't make those payments, I assume there's an out in the contract that allows for that? Or is there a, what's that like if, if our revenue just is, is really bad for the next few months?
I don't know the timing off the top of my head, but I am positive that there is an out in every contract that we have. And probably Mr. Dorman can confirm that.
I believe it's 30 days notice, but I, I will double check that. But there is a clause that if we were to have a revenue failure, that the contract could be canceled in a timely manner.
Okay. I mean, if, you know, we talked about this with mowing, when we talked about mowing last week or two weeks ago. You know, at, at some level, we've got to maintain these assets. The contract is probably the cheapest way to continue to maintain that asset to get us through this period of time. We don't want it to just sit there and go to waste while we're, we're trying to get revenues back up. Because I think everyone is optimistic that we'll be back, at least somewhere close to where we were here within the next few months. So, you know, it seems to me a reasonable thing to keep, keep the place maintained and keep it running as much as we can as we go forward.
And I think they've done an excellent job of maintaining it, so it's, it's no question of whether or not we think they are doing a good job or not. It's, it makes sense to continue.
Yeah, I've heard nothing but good feedback from, for Henderson managing the course.
Well, as far as maintenance, even if we were to close the golf course down, it has to, it has to be maintained if we're going to continue to operate it as a golf course at any point in the future. Because the things that make it work can't be ignored.
Yeah. Okay, counselors, further comment, or is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the renewal of contract for services with Henderson Golf for the operation of Lakeside Golf Course.
Second.
We have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Counselor Zanotti to approve this renewal. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that renewal is approved. That takes us down to item 6C, approved bid recommendation to award unit price contract Emory Sappin Sons for the bid amount. This is a long one. This is for road grinding. Mr. Carnes?
Good evening, counselors. Bonnie Carnes, Director of City Engineering. You will recall some time ago when we gave the report from IMS on the conditions of all of our city streets. And we told you the good news was that structurally, the pavements were in, in better shape maybe than we thought. The bad news was, which was no surprise, we have some of the roughest riding streets in country. One of the ways that the good news can add, it's easier to correct that ride and less expensive than to go in and structurally repair it. For our concrete streets, we looked at the method to come in and grind the, the concrete surface. We estimated that to do 32nd Avenue from Sanger to Western, Main Street from Stillwater Creek, Bridge to 11th Avenue, and Western Road from 6th to 3rd Annoys would cost $465,000. When we bid that project, we had one bidder that bid was $546,736. We had an alternate in that project, only two alternates, to go ahead and extend 32nd Street south of the bridge. Where we call that part of that road is in the city limits, part of it's in the county. So we put that together in case the county was interested in participating. We're having a similar revenue shortage that we are and decline to participate at this time. Or having a similar revenue shortage that we are and decline to participate at this time. I met with the County Commissioner for District One, he and I kicked around some ideas of ways we might be able to jointly work with our maintenance crews to, to solve some of those issues. So we're not abandoning that, we're just looking at other alternatives. As I said, the project bid over what we had budgeted for it by about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars when we consider the contingency. So as part of our request, we'd asked that you appropriate an additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the half-cent sales tax to go into the fund to full fund this project. I would point out also, before we started doing diamond grinding, we would have done, as rough as that section of road is, we would have done some type of an asphalt overlay. And that would have cost three to four times as much as what we're doing for the, for the diamond grinding. So we think, we think that's a good use of, of our pavement management dollars. Any questions?
Counselors, questions?
Not at this time.
Monty, can you, can you reiterate why, why these specific sections were chosen?
We chose Thirty Second Street because it, it's in very bad condition from a, from a ride standpoint. And really needs some type of improvement to it. An attempt was made several years ago that didn't quite get the job done. We picked Western Road as part of our project to melon overlay the asphalt from Third Street onto Virginia and then in Hall of Fame onto Monroe. So it's part of that overall project. And then Main Street, again, we looked at our pavement management plan and, and some of that, some of the traffic counts and the way that street was rated and chose to do Main Street as well. But our next go around, we planned to do McElroy. And if I remember correctly, when we presented our five-year projections on McElroy, we wanted to install under drains to drain that subgrade so that when we go in and do the patching, it'll work and we need to wait about a year to do that. We've installed those under drains. And so now then, when we're ready to do that, we have a much better chance of, of that road lasting longer.
Okay. And so the, the money that was already budgeted for this item, do you remember which, which year was this one out of?
This is fiscal year eighteen, pavement management, I didn't make that claim.
Okay. Counselors, any further questions or a motion on this item?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve bid recommendations to award a unit price contract to Emory Snap, Emory Sapp and Sons for the bid amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six. Authorized expenditures up to six hundred and twenty-five thousand for the project, including contingency of seventy-eight thousand, two sixty-four. And approve basically a budget amendment of a hundred and sixty thousand from the half, half-cent sales tax.
And what else?
Authorize the city manager to execute contract documents for a transportation project to grind concrete pavement at the following locations. Thirty Second Avenue from Singer and Western Roads, Main Street from Stillwater Creek Bridge to Eleventh Avenue and Western Road from Sixth to Third Avenues.
We have a motion and a second to award this contract and authorize the budget amendment and authorize the city manager to execute the document. Teresa, can you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington? Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. That takes us to six D, authorize the mayor to read, to authorize the mayor to sign relocation agreements with OG&E and ONG for relocation of facilities within the project limits of the Perkins Road Improvement Project and approve, associated budget amendment appropriating three hundred and eighteen thousand from the half-cent sales tax funds for the project. Mr. Carnes?
So this is part of the joint agreement that we have with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation to improve Perkins Road from basically Sixth to McElroy, excuse me, Sixth to Airport Road. The major portion of the, of the project is at a fifth lane between McElroy and Lakeview and reconstruct the McElroy-Parkins Road intersection. The agreement with ODOT, that's the responsibility for the design, the purchase of the right of way and the relocation cost for any utilities on the city of Stillwater. ODOT then is funding a hundred percent of the construction costs. We work with utilities and the design to minimize the relocation necessary. The, the policies for, for public utilities using public right of ways, is there allowed to use the public right of ways for no, no charge? Except when the time comes that the public needs the right of way for, for continued use. Those public utilities have to relocate at their own expense. If they are in their own private easements, then the public agency pays to relocate those utilities. So in this instance, we have Oklahoma Natural Gas has some gas lines in private easements, particularly at the McElroy-Parkins Road intersection. One of the main gas lines that feeds the city of Stillwater runs along the north side. Portions of that in a private easement, portions around the public easement are responsible for the share that's in the private easement. They have a similar situation at Lakeview. So we have those costs. And Oklahoma Gas and Electric has three poles to move. One of them is entirely in the right of way. And then two of them are guide poles to support their facilities on opposite side of the street. These would be just east of Perkins Road on McElroy, the south side. Those poles and the down guys are in private easements. So we have to, to pay to have those poles relocated. The, and the cost of those come to a total of about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars with the contingency. I would say to you that since we've written the report, we've learned that when we put the budget together for the right of way costs, we put that together and the budget authorization and, and approval, that was warranted for right of way and utility relocations. So you have already appropriated these funds to do that. And all we need now is just approval of the agreement and authorization for the mayor to sign. We do not need the budget amendment.
Monty, given that the price of oil dropped below zero today and the state is declaring like a billion-dollar revenue shortfall, what are the chances that ODOT pushes this project back?
ODOT has pushed the project back once. We always have that possibility. It's my goal for us to be in a position so that they can't say, well, the city of Stillwater isn't ready. It makes it easy for them to push this project back. So I'd like for us to be ready and we're on track to do that now.
Okay. Counselors, anything further from Monty on this item? Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign relocation agreements with OG&E and ONG for relocation of facilities within the project limits of the Perkins Road Improvement Project. The budget amendment, I guess we don't have to do the budget amendment?
That's correct.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Zanotti and a second from Counselor Jalowski to approve this item. Teresa, can you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Item six E, approve right-of-way acquisition at twenty-two, twenty-four West Admiral and authorize the mayor to sign document and authorize payment of thirty-seven, twenty, excuse me, three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for four hundred and fifty square feet of right-of-way and damages. Mr. Carnes?
So again, this project is part of our improvements along Western Road, particularly the active transportation path along the east side. When we get down to where Perkins Road, excuse me, when we get down to where Western at, at Virginia starts to curve to become Hall of Fame, the right-of-way got very, very tight at that location. In addition, there's some utility poles. We could have squeezed the path in, would have been very close to the existing fence. It also would have required that we put a couple of pretty sharp jobs in, in the pathway. We didn't think that was keeping pace with their resolution that we consider all forms of transportation. We approached the adjacent property owner about the possibility of acquiring the right-of-way. They were very open to that and worked with us very well on that. So we need just a, probably just kind of a triangle of land from the northwest corner of that lot in order to put the, put the path in in a manner that we think greatly enhances the use and also increases the safety for the folks that do use it. We have funds in the contingency of the project to pay for this. And we'd recommend to you that, that we do purchase the right-of-way. I would also point out to you that we did make one additional concession. And that's, there would have been a fifteen-foot setback in property line. And since this is right-of-way that moves the property line, which would have encroached in that, there'll be a fence there. We were agreeable to waive the fif, if, if sometime in the future they want to add an addition and they would encroach into that fifteen-foot setback. We don't see that that's going to be a big harm to the community, particularly since there'll be a fence there. And given the, how wide that right-of-way in and want to fake the looks. So we, we felt like that was a fairly easy concession to, to grant as part of the negotiation.
Monty, it's been, it's been a lot of fun to watch that sidewalk or mode of transportation really take place. And I appreciate the effort into, it seems like a small space that we're talking about, but it is impactful. We, we're making this as a way for people to get around easily. And a small thing like that, if it's not able for everyone to use, then what's the point of having the rest of it? And so I just appreciate the time and effort of your staff went to make this happen. So thank you.
It, it will be a nice improvement, as I've pointed out before. When we complete this, you'll be able to go from Nineteenth and Range Road all the way to McElroy and Jardale or to north of, north of Boomer Lake, the northern end up there almost to Richmond Road, by staying on a trail the entire way. Now, it's likely to be four foot wide, but that's a pretty substantial distance you'll be able to travel if you're to walk or ride that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Also heard a lot of positive feedback from the community on that section of trail. A lot of people are really looking forward to it.
So, yeah, this old money, this, this piece is right there on that last house going north on Western, right?
That's correct.
And the sidewalk will go past that all the way around to the, the stoplight?
It'll actually go further than that. We, we, because we didn't have this piece, the contractor chose to start at Admiral and go south to, to Sixth. Now he'll come back and go north to Farm Road. And then when we get up to Hall of Fame, we'll jump over to the north side and complete a section, I think between Willis and, and the next street. And then we'll complete or would rebuild the, rebuild existing sidewalk from Cleveland from Walnut back to the west. I believe that's McDonald Street, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so we'll get all the way into campus.
We'll get all the way into campuses.
Yeah, excellent. All right, counselors, is there a motion on item E?
Motion to approve the right-of-way acquisition at twenty-two, twenty-four West Admiral Avenue and authorize the mayor to execute the document and authorize payment of three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for four hundred and fifty square feet of right-of-way and damages.
Second.
We have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Counselor Wedlake to approve item E. Please call the roll, Teresa.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. That takes us to, thanks for being here, Monty. It looks like he's already popped out. Appreciate the, the work. Takes us to item six F, approved budget amendment reflecting a donation of five thousand dollars from Oklahoma State University for materials and upkeep of the dog park. Mr. McNichol?
Thank you, Mayor. And if I may give you just a quick update, we, we've had a couple of technical problems tonight. I've spoken with Mr. Dorman to ensure that we have followed all the rules and we have the YouTube transmission was not great at the first part of the meeting. But the cable television has continued and the entire program will be available online tomorrow to be played back. So anybody missed the first of this, they can get it at the end. Now, the report before you, CC twenty-sixty-eight is a request for a budget amendment to include five thousand dollars for maintenance of the dog park. We have been partners with OSU for several years on operating the dog park. They have contributed labor and a few materials to ensure that the dog park is well-maintained. Their labor has disappeared and they don't have the number of people that they once had that they could draw on to do that work. So OSU has opted to donate five thousand dollars for materials and upkeep of the park. And the budget amendment before you reflects that donation and puts it in a special account for that purpose only.
Thanks, sir. Counselors, any questions or a motion?
I wondered if you had a, a figure for how much that does cost to maintain that for a year? Is that a possibility to have that figure?
I believe it would be just about double that or, or around ten thousand dollars to maintain it. So I can, let me check tomorrow and ensure that I've given you the right number and I'll get back to you. But I believe that is correct.
I was just curious how, how far five thousand dollars went.
Yeah, it, unfortunately, because of the, the wear on the interior of the park, there's not a lot to mow. The animals keep it pretty well beaten down and most people stay off of it when it's muddy.
Are there questions or a motion?
Motion to approve the budget amendment reflecting receipt of the donated funds from OSU and movement of the funds to an account to be used for dog park maintenance and materials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Teresa, can you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jalowski?
Yes.
Vote of five to zero, that budget amendment is approved. Item six G is approve the budget amendment appropriating federal grant funds of five point two million dollars for phase one of the North Apron expansion at the Stillwater Regional Airport. Is, is this Melissa?
It's Melissa. Good evening, all counselors and mayor. Before you this evening is a budget amendment to ref-. amendment to reflect the award of Federal Aviation Administration grant to fund the Phase One of the Apron expansion. Back in 2019, so back in February of 2019, the resolution was issued to approve the application, and we accepted the grant in August of 2019. So this is kind of that housekeeping that goes along with the acceptance of grant awards, and it's going to increase the revenue and also increase the related expenditure on this particular grant project. So our motion, or our recommendation to you this evening is that you approve this budget amendment reflecting the award of that grant.
Thank you, Melissa. Councillors, questions, comments or a motion?
Motion to approve the budget amendment appropriating federal grant funds of $5,200,000 for Phase One of the North Apron expansion at Stillwater Regional Airport.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this budget amendment. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councillor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that budget amendment is approved. Takes us to item six H, approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 102 for contract year 2020, 2021. Mr. McNichol.
Thank you, Mayor. Every year, we enter into negotiations with both unions, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 102 and the International Firefighters Association for an annual contract. And we did that, we're in that process with both. And I am pleased to report to you that following a couple of meetings where negotiations began, the FOP on March 28th, President Matt Smidl sent an email requesting to extend the current contract for the 2021 year with no changes. President Smidl advised it's our goal to get the contract out of the way and let the city leadership focus on the ongoing emergency in the city, state, and country that we are facing. The understanding of the FOP leadership team and their members during these unprecedented times is greatly appreciated. And it was taken to a vote of the membership on April 1, and it was approved, ratified by the membership. So our recommendation is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the FOP contract year 2021.
Councillors, questions?
Just gratitude to the FOP for moving forward.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a really different, you know, we've been talking about the budget and how difficult it is to look into the future. And so it's, it's, it's very helpful for the FOP to understand that and to be willing to move forward and help us, you know, feel our way through what this budget is going to look like in this coming year. So we certainly appreciate that cooperation. Is there a motion?
Motion to collective bargaining agreement with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 102 for contract year 2021.
We have a motion from councillor Zanotti and a second from the vice mayor to approve this collective bargaining agreement. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington? Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
A resounding yes.
Councillor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that collective bargaining agreement is approved. All right, that takes us to six. I approve a budget amendment reflecting a donation from Wilson Chevrolet to the Stillwater Fire Department for the purchase of personal protective equipment. Mr. McNichol.
Well, for the past several years, Wilson Chevrolet has donated money to first responders here in the city. And there couldn't be a better time for them to make an additional $10,000 donation. They have done that in providing that money to the Stillwater Fire Department for the purchase of personal protective equipment. And as everyone is aware, that those items are in very short supply. With any excess that we're aware of going to the medical center, this will help us tremendously. Our firefighters go on medical calls with the ambulance when there's a life-threatening situation, and we need them to be protected. And again, we're very grateful, and staff would recommend a budget amendment reflecting receipt and expenditure of donated funds for the purchase of personal protective equipment through the fire department.
Councillors?
Again, huge gratitude, and the generosity of our citizens is, is really appreciated.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you very much, Wilson Chevrolet.
Nice to be doing just kind of regular business, isn't it? Especially good regular business.
Yeah. Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the budget amendment reflecting a donation from Wilson Chevrolet to the Stillwater Fire Department for the purchase of personal protective equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this budget amendment. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Another resounding yes.
Councillor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that budget amendment is approved. That takes us to item six J, update on the dilapidated property addresses 3314 East Fourth with owner Ricky Cole. Mr. Dorman?
Just very briefly, I was advised this morning that we are still waiting to finalize a couple of the permits for Mr. Cole's remodeling on that structure. And given that we don't have all the permits in place, it's probably wise to wait to execute an agreement until everything is ready to move forward. So we'd request that this item be continued to the May 4th agenda.
Do you have a sense of, I mean, I assume he's, he's been working on it, we've been working on it, it's just a normal sort of an issue here, just trying to get those permits in place?
Just getting all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. We're almost there. I'd almost asked to just go one week, but just with an abundance of caution, I think probably May 4th, just to make sure we have everything done.
Do we need a motion to reset that?
I would ask you that you please do that, since it was a hearing item originally.
Councillors?
Motion to move the, approve the agreement, I'm getting it up in these words, to move this to May 4th, this item on the dilapidated property schedule.
We have a motion and a second to move this item to the May 4th 2020 meeting. Teresa, could you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councillor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item will be rescheduled for May 4th. Item six K, approve the Stillwater Regional Airport to submit an application for Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act Airport Grant and authorize the mayor to sign the associated documents. Mr. Prigle.
Good evening. Paul Prigle, Airport Director. And I come to you this evening with an update on the CARES Act and how it has, has or will be impacting our airport. As everyone is aware, at the end of March, rolled out a $2 trillion federal relief act that, within that, there was $10 billion set aside for U.S. airports with the intent to obviously help prop them up in a time where air traffic and travel is at an all-time low. And so as we've moved through this process, it's, we've just been kind of waiting to see what, if any, funds our airport would apply for or be eligible for. A couple of weeks ago, we received word that the Airport Improvement Program, which is the program that funds most of our big pavement projects, the project that Melissa was just talking about, those all come from a 90% grant that we then provide 10% match. And so one, the first thing we learned about is this upcoming year's project, which is the South Apron and the replacement of our fire truck. If you remember, I brought matter to you all back, I believe in November for a resolution. We've been going through the application process. In total, it's just a little over $6.5 million total, which was going to obligate the city to $655,555 as our 10% match. We learned that as, as part of this CARES Act, AIP funding will come at 100% this year. And so that's going to obviously free that money up for other uses. It's just, couldn't come at a better time, obviously. What I'm bringing to you tonight is the second component that we've learned. Back last Tuesday on the 14th of April, we learned from the Department of Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration had awarded all the airports various levels of funding. The Stillwater Regional Airport has allocated $1,112,414. And that is a formula that they came up with, I'm told, based on our annual employments, our 2018 employment numbers, which is the number of passengers that get on a plane and leave Stillwater, and also the, based on our annual entitlements, which we receive as part of a commercial airport. And so this came at a, at a quite surprise for us. And it's, it's a little bit of, it's a unique opportunity. It's still a grant, but it's 100%. It does not come with the long list of grant assurances that our typical grants do. It comes with some equal opportunity requirements that typical federal grants do. But the big thing that this is designed for is to help airports with operation and personnel costs. And, and so it's, it's got a mandate that we maintain 90% of our employees that we had on March 27th, 2020, through at least December 31st, 2020. Other than that, it's, there's not really a lot of other strings attached to this grant. Like any other federal grant, it's done through reimbursement. So what, the process is still unfolding, but what we're told is going to happen is, within the next couple of days, we'll be receiving a grant application, just like we do the other grant year. This will require signature of the mayor, and basically that's the application for the grant. As long as we plan on using it for operating or personnel expenses, the money, once we submit that grant application, we're told will be available within seven to 14 days. And then it's basically just going to be sitting in the account, so to speak, with the FAA, and we'll submit documentation to draw down on that as we need it. And talking to city management, we've, we obviously, we, we know citywide, we're going to be hit with COVID-19 deficits as far as our revenues. And so this comes at a great time for us to be able to offset, hopefully, some of those normal draws that we have on the city budget and allow the airport to be more self-sustaining this year, and hopefully free up that money that would normally go to the airport to some other city uses. So tonight, I'm just requesting permission from the council to continue on with this endeavor to, to access this money through the application and then to authorize the mayor to sign any further documents that might come our way.
Sounds like an easy answer here, Paul.
I'm hoping for a resounding yes.
Well, I think it's, it's great that, you know, you guys are out combing through that, that CARES Act is not a simple matter and trying to figure out exactly what applies and where and what we can get. I know there's a lot of folks at the city who have been spending considerable time trying to figure out what the city might be able to get. There's not a lot of direct help for us, but, you know, like you said, freeing up money from the airport would be, would be an overall positive to the city budget.
What are the, what's the, the length of time, the grant period? Is that for the next, for like a 12-month time period? Ah, I'm the councillor that has a dog, Brian. Happens, it's me. Is that just for the next year? Do you have it spent down in the next year, or do they expire at any point in time?
Actually, unlike any other grant we've gotten, this one does not expire. They, they actually made it very clear that you can draw down on this. We were asking about personnel expenses and things, and one of the things we asked about was if we needed to draw for the next three years, could we do it? And they said, yes, absolutely.
That's awesome. That's a great, I mean, that, just even the, the freedom of that really is so helpful beyond just the, the grant amount.
Absolutely.
Is there a motion on this?
Motion to approve Stillwater Regional Airport to submit an application for the CARES Act and authorize the mayor to sign associated documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item K. Teresa, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Here it comes, Paul. A resounding yes.
Councillor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Thank you, Paul. Takes us to six L, quarterly financial report from Kristy Kluck. This might be the last one of these that's sort of positive.
Well, we'll see, we'll see. Good evening, Kristy Kluck, the Finance Director. And we have talked a lot recently about what the future may hold for city finances amid all this COVID-19. But I want to take a step back and, and remind you that it's still relevant to take a retrospective look to kind of see where we were before COVID-19 really entered the picture. And so these third quarter financial reports, I think, are a great opportunity for us to do that. So as of the end of the third quarter, both our revenues and our expenditures were on target to meet projections, again, taking into account those one-time amounts and seasonal activities. So our sales tax was healthy and stable. Our use tax was coming in above projection, which prompted the council to take action to approve a budget amendment to increase our use tax projection by $900,000. Our interest income has consistently exceeded projections throughout the entire fiscal year thus far, and our utility revenues were in line with meeting projections as well. And so overall, the city was sitting in a very good financial position at the end of the third quarter. And so I hope that that's very reassuring to the council and to our citizens. Because, really because of that, and because we were in such a good financial position, now as we work through the impact of COVID-19, instead of having to look back and potentially rectify a prior gap in revenues or rectify a prior issue with expenditures not aligning with our, our appropriations, instead we can, you know, focus our time and energy on looking forward and trying to come up with those solutions to really offset any of those future losses that we're predicting. So there's no action that's needed with this report. It's just for informational purposes. And, you know, just be assured that our staff continues to, to work through the impacts of COVID-19. We will be bringing those, those budgetary actions before you as needed. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Councillors?
I don't have a question, but I do really appreciate these quarterly reports, Kristy.
Good. I'm, I'm glad they're helpful to you. And we'll get these on the website tomorrow.
Yeah, I think, you know, you guys do these in such a, a much cleaner format than the standard reporting stuff that you have to do so that they're
Yes.
understandable to people. And it is, it's really, it is reassuring, at least in the sense that the, the finances up to this point have been in pretty good, in, in pretty good shape, and we have a good handle on what we're going to have to do.
Yeah, that just really sets a good groundwork and framework for us as we move forward and really work through, you know, the potential losses that we're looking at.
Any further questions, councillors? Thanks for all your hard work, Kristy. Appreciate it. Okay, that takes us to item six M, which is just a general update on where we are COVID-19 related with, with the general issues on this front. We haven't made any updates to our standing We haven't made any updates to our standing emergency declarations since the last time we met. We have released some information around the strong encouragement of face coverings, fabric face coverings in line with CDC recommendations. We're continuing to push for that. You should absolutely be wearing some sort of fabric face covering if you are out in public during this time. Just as a reminder, we are still under a shelter-in-place order. This is working. I think we see it in the numbers locally. We see, you know, an actual flattening of the curve based on where, what projections were like before that. And it needs to continue because we need to continue to keep those case numbers low until we're in a better space when it comes to testing and treatment. So, fabric face covering still encouraged. We will, you know, we're collecting from the city perspective. If you have donated masks, you can provide homemade or otherwise. We are taking those. We've asked folks to donate those to us here at the city so that we can distribute them out to places that need them, either individuals who need a mask or other folks around town. Because the expectation is here relatively quickly, especially as we start to talk about reopening businesses in Stillwater, that fabric face coverings will be required as a part of going in or out or being around in public as we start to emerge from the current status. I saw today, I think, that Walmart nationwide is now requiring that their associates, people working in their stores, wear face coverings. I would expect many more national chains to adopt that same sort of a policy. Very thankful for Walmart adopting those kinds of policies on their own. And I think businesses would do well to follow suit. But we, as a city, will work to come up with plans that will likely require the use of fabric face coverings for public interactions where closer person-to-person contact can't be avoided. In terms of reopening businesses, a lot of questions out there, a lot of discussion around this. Kind of when does this end? When do we start to see a lift? There's a lot of questions and I think some general discussion happening, but not a lot of details really from any of the sort of, either nationally or statewide. The President and the White House did release, in conjunction with the CDC, a phased plan of reopening that requires, has some certain, some gateways that have to be met in communities or in states or in regions. It's very fluid in terms of what has to be met and where. But it does, I think, very appropriately tell those of us in communities who are dealing with this that we need to see a consistent reduction in both COVID cases and even flu-related illnesses or flu-like illnesses in being reported and being tested for. We need to see a consistent decline in those over the course of two weeks before we really start to talk about even the first phase of reopening businesses. Now, exactly what does that mean and how do you measure that? And what's a decline? Does one day offset that or is it an overall decline? Those are issues that we're still working through and talking about in terms of how to measure what a two-week decline looks like. The President's guidelines also mandate that you need a robust testing program, especially among at-risk healthcare workers. Those workers that are dealing with sick patients on a regular basis need to be tested not just once, but on a regular basis so that they can, we can ensure that the folks who are on the front lines of treating COVID patients are not themselves becoming sick, which then, of course, makes it harder for the hospital to treat patients if they don't have the workers there to do it. So, those are major issues that we're going to be looking at here. We have a meeting tomorrow with officials from the county. And we'll have some meetings later this week as well with some business owners and some nonprofits, some other folks around town who are dealing with these issues to start to talk through what exactly those phases will look like. I think, given the numbers right now, it should not come as a surprise to people if that opening gets pushed out past the end of April on some of these, some of these businesses. You should not be surprised, like I said before, that fabric face coverings and masks will be required as part of reopening some of these places. Specific social distancing rules will also likely be a part of this, again, according to the President and CDC's recommendations. Those recommendations are for three phases with two weeks at least of checking in between, making sure that you're not seeing an increase in cases. And so, with the two weeks beforehand, before you even get to Phase One, that plan is at least two months long before you get all the way through it and two months of consistent decline and consistent improvement in the disease-related statistics in the community. And so, that's a fairly high bar. And I think we should be prepared for the fact that it may not, it's not all going to happen right away, right? We're going to see that phased approach. It's going to be slow, it's going to be steady. We're going to take our time and make sure that we don't put ourselves in a worse position by opening things too quickly or putting people out there to get sick and then, you know, undo all the hard work that we've done to this point. So, we are having the discussions. We are going to be following, you know, as well as we can, the sorts of phased plans that our healthcare authorities are giving us. But we're going to also make the decisions that are best for our community here in Stillwater. I think every community has to take the responsibility to do its best for them locally. And so, we will, we will come up with those plans ourselves here over the next few days and week and move forward with what we find to be the most reasonable thing. Counselors, questions or comments or other updates on what's going on in COVID stuff that you've been dealing with?
Mayor, I generally speak about mental health. And just maybe serendipitously, I had a horrible day today. I am generally a very optimistic person. And it was just, it just feels like too much. So, I had to go outside, do some heavy, really heavy shoveling. And that kind of got me back into a good frame. I had to take a couple of a leave before the meeting, but getting outside in the weather and doing some physical activity really helped me. I am hopeful. I, you know, I am not, I don't, it's not helpful to be frivolously optimistic. But I do have hope that this is, that we will come through this. Because of the attitude of the citizens of Stillwater and because of their generosity and their paying attention to your proclamations, we will come through this, as we do usually in tragedies, stronger than ever. I do want to recommend that if anybody does have, becomes worried about themselves or friends or relatives being way too depressed about this or really despairing, there is help and all kinds of hotlines. All the hotlines are listed on this library resource page and in various other websites. So, do not hesitate to ask for help or you can come shuffle with me.
If you need manual labor to do, I could, I could find some stuff in my backyard, probably. From a distance.
I have some cool masks. And I'll be, I might, I might take you up on that, although we have seven and a half acres to take care of here. Probably will run out.
Other counselors, questions or comments? Okay, you know, just to reiterate, you know, I think, like Vice Mayor was saying, I think we've done a good job to this point. We are seeing progress. We are seeing, you know, positive effects for the effort that we're putting into this. We all want it to be over as soon as, as soon as possible. You know, I think, you know, every day, we sort of see the effects of this, whether it's personally in mental health or in businesses that we know, business owners that we know, our friends and family that are struggling financially. And it's a, it's a difficult time. But we are seeing, we are seeing positive returns at this point. We are seeing good things. I am optimistic. And I'm optimistic that we're going to recognize, I think, in the comments and the questions I've gotten, you know, that people see the need to be careful and be cautious as we come out of this as well. But we're, we're making progress in that direction. And so, again, just appreciate all the efforts that our community has put in to getting through this. And we'll continue to work as hard as we can to get to the next stage. Okay. That takes us to item seven, Reports from Officers and Boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, sir.
Thank you. Mr. McNichol?
Just to tie into your discussion about masks earlier and the fact that we've asked for people to make those and bring them, BD, I'm pleased to tell you, in the short time that has passed, we already have in excess of 300. When we get enough that we think that we can start distributing those, we will publicize the fact that they'll be available. And we'll, we do have a distribution system worked out for in front of City Hall. And if the weather's nice, at any rate, we will start distributing those when we think we get enough that we won't run out in a day.
I have, I think, a couple hundred that the selling folks at my church made to bring over there, so.
Oh, great, that makes 500 then.
There you go.
We're amassing them pretty quickly. And that is after us asking people to make them for city employees. So, we're probably well up over 1,200, 1,500 masks at this point in total that have been donated. And I want to tag you into what you said. I have heard some discussions about the need to wear masks. It's not for you. It's not to keep you from getting sick. It's to keep someone else from getting sick because you're spreading germs. And frankly, some of the younger folks that I see out and about town seem to be the largest group that are not wearing them. And that is also, and Dr. Redlake can probably say if I'm wrong about this, but that's also the group that's probably most likely to be asymptomatic and perhaps spreading that disease. So, it's not for you, please wear it for the others. It's the right thing to do. It's kind of the golden rule thing. Do unto others what you hadn't done to you. So, let's put those masks on and wear them when we're in public.
Absolutely, thank you very, yeah, thank you. That's a good point and I appreciate you reiterating that. It is, it is not about, you know, I, if I don't care about getting sick, then I don't have to wear a mask, right? It's about making sure that you're not getting somebody else sick because there are a lot of folks, all of the evidence points to the fact that this disease is being spread by people who don't know they have it. And so, you should assume you do and you should put a mask on to help minimize the risk of getting somebody else sick. All right, counselors, any announcements or discussions? I'm sure you guys all would like to say how important it is for the rest of the city of Stillwater, the 50% or so that hasn't yet responded to the census, that they should respond to the census, right?
Yeah.
We're, we're still losing to Norman in our Bedlam census battle. We're still down 5% or so. So, this is, this is not looking good for me in an OU hat. But regardless, if you have not yet responded to the census, please go to my2020census.gov and respond. We are just around 50% in terms of actual response rate. So, there's a lot of folks out there that still need to do it. It is incredibly important, especially now. All of this money we've talked about, grant-wise, from the federal government, you know, the availability of funding for us going forward, availability of funding for medical, the medical system that comes through, through census numbers is all very important. So, please, please, please respond to the census. That's all I got.
It might be already, everybody who's probably watching our meeting has heard the census talk and maybe they are the people. But if everybody could go out and get five more people to do the census, the next five people we run, make sure that they have done the census.
Absolutely, yeah, good point, yeah. A lot of the folks who are paying attention probably have done it. But have this conversation with your friends, with your church group, with your family, with your neighbors, from a social distance, send an email. But let them know how important it is to get the census done. All right, that takes us down to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. Teresa, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council Meeting is now adjourned. At this point, what do I have next? I have SITA next, is that okay? We will call, I will call to order the April 20, 2020, meeting of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. Item two on the docket is a, I'm sorry. Item two on the agenda is the consent docket of regular meeting minutes from March 2. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Teresa, could you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket's approved. And we all, we all just responded to trustee, not counselor in that setting.
Sorry, I'll do that next time.
I like, you know, I like the formal requirements.
Yeah.
All right, only thing on this agenda tonight is item five, General Orders. Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Economic Development Report from Mr. Justin Mingus.
Evening, everybody.
Hello, you're missing your bowtie.
Hey, you're just lucky that I put this thing on, all right? I brought a wardrobe change just for this. I've got jeans and tennis shoes on underneath the screen, so you're good. So, I know it's a long agenda and so, I'll kind of run through a few of our normal metrics and then give you guys an update on some of the COVID-19-related programming, how we're assisting some members and non-members alike and then leave it up for any, you know, questions or comments you might have. I thought it might be prudent for us to start at the very beginning with just a general statement or a couple of comments as far as the strength of the Chamber of Commerce. You all have spent a significant amount of money over the years investing in the Chamber with service contract. And I wanted to report that our balance sheet is strong. And so, this event isn't stressing us in a way that you all would need to be worried about the service being provided. So, we have a year's worth of savings account, basically, to run both the Chamber side as well as the economic development side if you receive zero revenue for the next twelve months. And hopefully, it doesn't get that bad, like Mr. McNichol said earlier. Hopefully, it's only maybe a 20 or 30% reduction in revenue for everyone. So, if we can last a year without any revenue, you can run the math on, if you collect half or 30%, we definitely have a long runway. So, because of that, all of our staff is working remotely with full pay, full benefits. We haven't had to do any reduction in that. And we've been able to invest a little bit in some tools that have helped us work remotely, Zoom and others. I just want to start there to let you guys know that we're doing okay and that you don't have to worry about us coming to you to say, hey, we can't make good on the contract that we have with you. As far as metrics go, RFP activity remains pretty consistent. There hasn't been a drop yet. And I'm not going to say that it won't be in the coming months, but those companies that we're looking to expand are generally looking at multiple business cycles or at least multiple quarters in the future when they're looking about an expansion project. And so, the ones that we've been engaging with are still looking to expand. So, our RFP activity was pretty similar to what normal months. We're averaging around 10 or so a month and responding to about 20 to 40% of those because we have the asset to apply to. We've got a couple of projects that I've reported to you all that are ongoing, that we are regularly communicating with. In the last three weeks, we've had conference calls with a couple of large projects that have reaffirmed or reiterated to us that this pandemic isn't impacting the business case for their project in our community. And so, we're still moving forward and having discussions with city staff on the water, wastewater and utility side to move it to the next phase. So, I'm really excited about our pipeline. And I haven't seen any, you know, degradation of our pipeline. Everything's still moving forward. On the retention side, as you would expect, our assists are increasing. And what we categorize as an assist is just a quick assist. I don't know, maybe, it's out of the town, right? So, if someone calls us and says, hey, I need a 2,000 square feet building or, hey, I need... or, hey, I need to get connected with a banker that's SBA-approved, something that's just quick that we can, you know, connect them right away, we log it as an assistant sales force, and that has doubled over the last few weeks, and we expect that number to continue to increase. We've also added a category on our reports that we provided to you, and we're going to keep this ongoing. We didn't have a site visit category for local companies. The site visit number that we reported to you was just companies that were on the attraction side that were coming to look. But we have been showing properties to folks over the last few years that are looking to expand or relocate just internally. And so we thought that would be prudent for you to see that number because that's just as important, actually a little more important than the attraction site visits. So we've had a couple of site visits in the last month or so, showing some new properties, which are local manufacturers that are looking to expand, and hoping that we can get them landed here in a new facility in the next few months. Obviously touring facilities, doing some due diligence on facilities, taking a little bit longer during this process, but we saw folks with some hard deadlines that they've got rent that are leases that are expiring and they need to get transitioned, or they're taking advantage of some of the grants and programming where they're looking to expand their offerings. And so we're trying to get some folks landed there. So that's a, kind of just a quick update on the metrics, right? Everything is, seems to be staying the course on those. I'll give you a few updates on the kind of COVID-19 programming-related stuff that we're working on. So you probably saw we did the gift card giveaway. We rolled that out within a few days of basically us being told to go home and work from the office, and we ran it for four weeks. So we were able to invest the chamber money initially to seed the campaign at $1,000. And so every week, we bought $1,000 worth of gift cards, about 30 businesses per week. So we were able to touch a little more than 90 businesses over that four weeks, and that equated to about $4,000 in gift cards back into the community. It was really fun to buy those gift cards and connect with our members, although it was only 25 or 50 or even $100. The thought that they knew they weren't alone and that we were trying to connect them, provide some additional marketing opportunities, they really enjoyed. Even some of them gave us some free gift cards, and I told them, hey, that's not the point. You know, I'm trying to buy them from you, not having given, but they appreciated the campaign so much that we did get a few of them for free. We stopped last week, partially for a couple of reasons, or partly for a couple of reasons. One, we saw other campaigns in the community. Stillwater Screen Printing was doing a T-shirt. The schools are doing signs for the class seniors, you know, the Pioneer Pantry. And so we thought there were other community events that we wanted to make sure we weren't taking the oxygen out of the room for those to succeed, as well as we wanted to kind of transition to some other programming and use some of our resources to some other programming, such as our In This Together series. And so you heard me talk about our startup Stillwater Initiative. It's a collaboration with us, Meridian Technology and Riada Center. We rolled out, in place of our 1 Million Cups segment a few weeks ago, we rolled out just kind of a town hall to get a poll and kind of see what the pulse of our business community. What are you guys going through? This was about two weeks into the shutdown. And so we said, what are you struggling with? What question do you need answered? As we build out some programming over the next couple of months, what are you looking to see? And so what we gained from that was everyone was kind of in a triage phase at that moment. We needed some resources to figure out how we go work remote if we've never worked remote. How do we do curbside pickup if we've never been on a drive-through? And so we built a couple of programs around that triaging. We had SBA folks come in and talk about funding. And then this week, actually on the 22nd, so two days from now, we'll start to transition into kind of our planning phase. So we think we've triaged enough that when you start planning, right, so in two days, we'll be talking about HR impacts of COVID-19. So if you had to lay anybody off, if you had to furlough anybody, if anyone went on unemployment, as you start to ramp up your hiring, is your process ready to go, or if you instantly had to hire 10 people, could you do that effectively, onboard them and do all that? So we'll have some HR professionals come talk about that. Now, on the 29th, we already have one scheduled. I believe Andrew Ranson is going to be speaking a little bit more about strategic planning. Most of our strategic plans, at least the near-term part of the strategic plan, the SJS sketch was just kind of shaken up on it, and we're going to need to reevaluate what that looks like. Or for some of us who are coming into a strategic planning year with the chamber is, we were going to go ahead and reevaluate our scrap plan at the end of the year. And so we wanted Andrew to come talk about, probably a little bit about traction, the entrepreneurial operating system and some other ideas he has. So as folks are coming out of this pandemic, here's how you need to be thinking about the near term, but then what are your long-term goals? What do you need to do now to achieve those? And then, so that'll lead us to the final phase of this In This Together series of kind of stabilizing. So now that you've gotten through, you've onboarded, you ramped up, you know, what are some things you could do now to stabilize your business? Because unfortunately, I don't think this is going to be the last event. Hopefully not, we don't have one to this severity, but, you know, natural disasters happen. This, there could be a second wave of this. You know, there are other viruses that could happen. So what can you do now to kind of prove your business a little bit in the future of some of these types of events? So if you wanted to attend those, go to startupstillwater.com. There's a registration link on there. We're doing it via Zoom just like this, and we have panelists and an opportunity for doing some Q and A. Attendance has been pretty high on those. We've averaged at least 60 or so every time we've done those. And to have 60 people tune into a very dry SBA funding PPP and then have Danny Cochran talk about some accounting, I mean, to the very, to the point of how do you log it in QuickBooks, right? I mean, so we got really technical on some of that. We had 60 people, so we're pretty excited about that. And then our last programming piece I'll talk about, Counselor Darlington, you talked about getting outside and being active. We're going to roll out a program tomorrow. For some of you that have participated in our Walk October event where we partnered with TSET in October, it's a steps competition. We have an app, and teams of five compete. We're going to shake the dust off of that app and actually roll out a steps competition for May. We're all at home, and I don't know if you're like me, I'm probably eating very poorly compared to what I should be. I'm not as active as I should be because I'm taking care of the kiddos and everything. So we're hoping that this event or this contest will get folks to understand, hey, you can still walk around the neighborhood. You can still, you know, take the kids for a bike ride and get some steps in. So look for some communication tomorrow on how you can register your team of five, and there's going to be no registration fee. So we're going to cover the cost of the app and everything. We're going to try to remove all the barriers. Just get signed up, compete with your friends, your peers that are working remotely, and may the best person win. And then a little bit on some of the resources, we rolled out a curbside delivery signs a couple of weeks ago. We ordered 100 of those. We delivered, I think we only have maybe 10 or so left. And we headed those out regardless of whether you're a chamber member or not. We're trying to get them out the door as quickly as we could. Not everyone has the luxury of having a drive-through, and so we wanted to be able to find the space where people can kind of mark a spot or two. There's a spot for them to write their phone numbers so people can dial in. Because even though some businesses might be open where you can come in and pick up, we really would prefer you stay out there and allow them to come to you and meet you at the curb. And so we didn't know if we were going to get, we had a few people on the front end that expressed interest, but we went ahead and bought 100 anyway and thought, you know what, I think once people start to see them, they'll want them. And so hopefully, as Mayor Joyce said, we can start opening up in some sort of logical manner here in the near term, and they don't, they aren't as necessary long-term, but I do think they're still going to be necessary probably in the near term. And if we have to reorder, we'll do it again. We printed those locally too, so Deringer's got a little bit of revenue from us, and he did a fantastic job of making sure that that price point was really good. So it's really cool to get curbside signs as well as support a local business on the printing side. We're doing some legislative updates, right? So we had Senator Langford do a conference call with us a week ago. We've had our state legislators still doing our Friday forums. We're doing them, you know, via Facebook here at the office. We're trying to get some of our other federal delegation to do a Senator Langford-style conference calls. They're looking at stimulus package 4.0, maybe 5.0 and 6.0, hopefully as they keep going. And so stay tuned in. If you want to revisit the old one, you can go to our website. Actually have Langford's call on our Flickr account, so you can go in there and listen to it. And then we do weekly calls with the Department of Commerce. So the great thing, I think, the Department of Commerce did real early on, almost the first or second week of this shelter-at-home or safer-at-home, whatever you want to call it, depending on what municipality you're in. They did a weekly call on Wednesdays, and every industry has an hour with Commerce, and they talk about specific needs for that industry, right? So manufacturing has a time slot, retail has a time slot, healthcare, they have one for EDOs and chambers. And we decided early on that we wanted somebody in all of those calls, but it didn't need to be Trent and I or Joshua. And so we have chamber leaders on every one of those calls, and we have a Google Doc where if there's anything that they feel is important that we need to get out in the e-news or report back to someone specifically, they can write it in that Google Doc. And Joshua on our team goes and looks through all that to find if there's any data. And so it's pretty cool that our community has someone represented in every one of those calls. And we have gotten a couple nuggets from that with some grants and some other incentives that are out there. And then finally, I put on our agenda the reboot incentive program. It has already expired or knew it was going to expire before getting live with you, but I wanted it out there in case somebody is a dork like me and goes through some of your agenda items. I thought it would be another touch point, but Department of Commerce did a really cool incentive program where if a manufacturer was looking to retool or reboot their manufacturing line to make PPE, so masks or gowns, the Department of Commerce gave a grant to help them retool and retrain. I know we had a couple of companies locally that applied for it. I haven't heard back whether or not they got it. Max Q being one of them, they do corrugated blood box. They started making the plastic masks. Those guys are wicked smart. Overnight, they said, hey, we took an open source code or whatever from Wisconsin. We printed it, and now we can do 250 a day if you know anybody that needs to buy it. And so the ingenuity of our communities is unreal right now. But, so that program has passed, but I wanted to put it out there because I assume that the Department of Commerce, it's probably was going to be successful, and I would assume they'll probably do a round two in the future. So if there are other manufacturers or somebody who likes to become a manufacturer and starts to make some PPE, be on the lookout. We can help you kind of guide that process. So as usual, I talk really fast to get through it because I know you guys have a long night, and it's already 7:15. So if there's any questions, I'm at the office, so I don't have to worry about kiddos or dogs barking.
Thanks, Justin. Counselors, any questions? Trustees, any questions for Justin?
Justin, I don't have any questions, but my role with Meridian, I serve on a lot of chamber boards and part of a lot of chamber organizations, and I think now more than ever, chambers are proving their relevance to the community because each of you are really taking a notice to what the needs are and expanding it past just members of your chamber. You're also doing it to the entire business community, which I think speaks volumes for the sense of community you're trying to build. And I just, I think Stillwater Chamber is doing a great job in making sure that kind of all points of what businesses are needing is getting done. So thank you for each unique program that you're rolling out, and thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're, we're trying, you know, if some of you know Brandon Phillips on our team, and Brandon, since he joined our team, has been trying to get me to come up with a financial model where we didn't have to have a member, that we could just be the community's chamber. And so this event has kind of resparked that conversation with Brandon about how we can do that. And it has been fun to interact with folks who aren't members, like the curbside sign, right? Hey, you know, hey, we're not a member, or how much does it cost? Don't worry about it. We need you to be around so our other members can survive. You know, they sell you flowers or lenins or whatever, and so we need you to be around. It's been fun. I mean, well, let me phrase it, no one wishes a pandemic, but, you know, it's, it's been cool to see our staff step up and really understand why we were put in place, you know, in 1936, right, is to shepherd our community members through some of the life. And the irony is, we didn't qualify for the PPP, right, the Payment Protection Program excluded 501(c)(6)'s, which are most of your restaurant associations, your chambers, your EDOs, the organizations a lot of people are leaning on right now, didn't get any of that. So we've signed on some letters, and hopefully this next stimulus package will include us. So we can get a little help, and maybe that'll help us refund some sponsorships back to our members.
I think it's encouraged a lot of partnerships between other businesses too. It's been neat to see these businesses partner together. You know, Aspen and Fountain Square partnering with Good Little Eatery and Marble Slab, just kind of, provide those services so that, you know, you're limiting your time out, which is what we want done. But then you're also supporting another business like, you know, that needs help during this time. So I've been, I've been encouraged by the partnerships of businesses to provide products and services to us so that we're not out as much, but still getting what we need.
Yeah, absolutely. It has been cool. I mean, that, you know, times of struggle are, you know, where entrepreneurs and creators do their best work, right? I mean, they figure out how to, how to get past those barriers, and we've definitely seen that in our businesses in Stillwater, and we appreciate your help, you know, to get them, help them, helping them do that. I think it's, it's great to see that the pipeline on projects is still there. You know, I think a lot of us, like we said earlier, I mean, this is, is bad now, but we're going to come out of it, and there's going to be stuff that comes back, and we need to be ready for that. We don't want to just sit around and, and, you know, throw everything at this and forget about, you know, two, three, four, six months down the road, two years down the road. So, you know, to have you guys continuing to work on those long-term projects and seeing our, you know, developers and companies that are looking at these kinds of things, looking, still looking long-term and realizing, you know, this isn't, this isn't the time to throw that stuff by the wayside, is a good thing. I'm glad to see that. And, and I think we, you know, here at the, at the city have to recognize, you know, like we have with some of these road projects and that kind of thing. I mean, this stuff still has to be done. You know, we still have to be ready to deal with, you know, our city a year from now when everything's, you know, back in somewhat normal sort of conditions. So anyway, all that to say, appreciate your continued work on those long-term projects, and that's, that's really where we need you guys the most right now, is to make sure we're, we're keeping our eye down the road.
Keep funding Monty and Bill's requests on the water, wastewater, street side. We need, we need that stuff right now.
We do. All right, trustees, any further questions for Justin? Thanks for being here.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you, guys.
All right. No other items on the CETA agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion from Trustee Darlington and a second from Trustee Jalowski. Is there, I'm sorry, Teresa, can you call the roll?
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington? Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting is now adjourned. That takes us over to the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for April 20th, 2020. We'll call this meeting to order. On the consent docket, we have regular, special meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes from March 23rd to April 6th. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington? Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake? Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jalowski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us, the only item on this agenda, item 5A, under general orders, is the NewGen Strategies and Solutions LLC Solid Waste Cost of Service and Rate Design Study, SUA 20-10. Mr. Knight?
Good evening. Chris Knight, Waste Management Director. In June of 2019, the SUA trustees approved entering into agreement with NewGen Strategies and Solutions for a solid waste cost of service and rate design study. NewGen has completed the study, and they're here to present their findings tonight. Mr. Yonkey is here to do that presentation. He'll go over a few different options for the trustees. Staff does not have a recommendation tonight, rather seeking the trustees' guidance. So I will turn it over to Mr. Yonkey.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? All right. Again, for the record, my name's Dave Yonkey with NewGen. You should all have received an executive summary that's about six or seven pages long. I'm going to go through that. You also received a detailed cost of service report. I'm not going to go through that, but if you have questions, feel free to ask me. Or if at any point after this there are questions, I'll be glad to chat with you during the day or what have you. What I want to go through, we started this project, as Chris mentioned, in July as part of the solid waste management plan. What I want to go through, we started this project, as Chris mentioned, in July as part of the solid waste management plan. We've put together a five year forecast. And what I want to do is walk through the three scenarios, show you what they are from a budgeting standpoint. And then what the rate recommendations, the three different scenarios are and what those would be. And then when I get through that, I'll try to keep it to about 10 minutes. Then I'll be glad to answer questions you may have. If you have questions during the presentation, feel free to interrupt me also. So what I'll start out with, first of all, we started with your fiscal year 2020 budget. Which, you know, will be coming to an end in the next couple of months. And so then we're forecasting out for the years 21 through 2024. And so we looked back at 2018 through 2020. And if you start on the, look in the executive summary, the bottom of page one, we've got the first scenario. And it goes over to the the top of the next page, but we basically have the O and M, the transfer to the general fund. Vehicle replacements, pay as you go, and I'll talk about and explain all these in a minute. And bottom line, if you look at the top of page two of the executive summary. You can see that the net revenue requirement is 6.1 million in fiscal year 2020. It drops to about $5,565,000 in 2021 or year two. And then gradually with inflation grows to $5,995,000. That's the net revenue requirement you have to recover through rates. Just a couple of things I'll mention. If you could turn back to the page one and and I'll show you these numbers at the bottom, and these will be consistent for the other scenarios. You'll see the transfer to the general fund in the current fiscal year was $1,928,000. And in 2021, it's projected at 900,000 and then a million thereafter. In fiscal year 2020, there were some one time transfers to the general fund from the solid waste fund. So you'll see going forward in 2021 that all of the revenue requirements really. Drop about half a million dollars a year as far as what you have to recover through rates, which is actually a good thing. We also have vehicle replacement that's at about $844,000 in year two. And then goes on out to about 970,000. That's a combination, as you may or may not know, the majority of your vehicles you lease. And so we factored in those lease payments as well as the ones you purchase being able to pay cash. So setting aside funds that are put into a reserve so you can pay cash. Specifically what we're focused on there are some street sweepers and pickups for the supervisors and things like that. And then finally, pay as you go capital. In this scenario, what we're talking about, there's a $1.4 million expenditure. That's budgeted to replace the parking lot where all your vehicles, your solid waste vehicles are maintained. If you've been out to that parking lot, you drive through it with your car once and you will realize that it needs to be replaced. There are a lot of potholes. It takes a lot of wear and tear. So that's something that was put into the budget. So that's scenario one. And in scenario one, that parking lot would be paid for with cash. When you go to table ES2 or scenario two, basically, everything is the same as to what I just described. Except what we're saying is that parking lot for $1.4 million issue debt for that. We ran a scenario to see what that impact would be. So if you look there, you'll see that line item, new debt service. And you'll have the debt service. This is funded to be constructed in 2024. So you have the first of a 10 year bond issue for $1.4 million paid back over a 10 year period. So you can see that the pay as you go. Was a year in scenario one goes away in your issuing debt. Which lowers the net revenue requirement. Scenario three, which is the one that has the most expenses. What it does, again, it's taking scenario one, it just builds on that. The parking lot is still. Debt financed, but then we also include $1.6 million for the recycling staging facility. If you remember, one of the scenarios we presented last summer and we've discussed when I was there, I think back in February. Was the scenario of a recycling staging facility for $1.6 million. That's the facility where then the long haul vehicles would take the recyclables and they could haul them, say, to Tulsa Recycling and and transfer in Tulsa. So we put a scenario together based off those, that analysis we did last summer. That shows the bond issue being included as well as the additional O and M. That would be incurred for the personnel and equipment that has to be amortized and paid for. And so if you look at that scenario. What we're doing, if you go to the top of page three of the executive summary, scenario three. You'll see there's a bond issue starting in fiscal year 2021 of $130,025. That's the $1.6 million bond issue over a 20 year period. And again, we're matching the length of the debt to trying to match the life of the asset. So that's why the parking lot has a 10 year life and this facility has a 20 year bond issue. But you have the bond issue issued in this upcoming fiscal year, which will start in a couple of months. Because remember, we're thinking and looking at this having to come online. So you have to start construction in 2021. And then we show in fiscal year 2023, the operating expenses that would come in for that, which is about. $260,000 a year. Okay, so those are the three scenarios. So very quickly, what's that mean from a rate standpoint? If you look at the middle of page ES3 for rate recommendations for those three scenarios, again, scenario one. Where you were paying cash for the parking lot and setting aside 350,000 a year. You would need a 5% increase in your residential rate in 2021 and in 2022. In scenario two, remember, again, it's the parking lot, but you're going to issue debt, which you don't have to issue till fiscal year 2024. You don't need a rate increase until fiscal year 2022 of 4%. You can skip a rate increase in 23 and then you need another 4% increase in 2024. The third scenario is again, the debt financed parking lot, the debt financed recycling staging facility. And then funding the O and M and capital. And that would require a 5% increase each year for three years, starting in fiscal year 2022. So let me show you real quick what that means from a rate standpoint. And what I'm going to do, if you turn over to page ES4. I'm just going to focus on the 96 gallon cart because that's where the vast majority of your customers are. And I'm just going to show you the impact. You can look at the 35 and 64 gallon on your own. But bottom line, your 96 gallon cart, if you look at the the first line in table ES5. This is the 96 gallon cart rate for scenario one. You currently are charging $18.28 per month. In 2021, that would go to 1919. In year 2022, it would go to $20.15 per month and stay at 2015. So basically, you're going up about $1.90 per month per household over that period of time. I'll tell you, well, I'll get through all the scenarios. The second scenario. Again, in this scenario, you're starting at 1828, but you don't have to raise a rate. Remember, this is the one where you're debt financing the parking lot. You don't have to raise the rates in 2021. You do. Raise it 4%, so you're going from 1828 to 1901. And then again, in 2024, a 4% increase. So you're going up to 1977. So basically, under this scenario, you're going up basically about $1.50 over four years. And then finally, scenario three is your most expensive one. And again, that's all relative because it's 5% increases for three of the years. Your 96 gallon cart rate goes up to 1919 in 2022. Goes up to 2015 and 23 and then to 2116 in 2024. So bottom line, the rate, the most expensive one with the recycling staging facility, the parking lot, the O and M for recycling. You're going up basically about $2.90. From that 1828 to the 2116. Okay? For commercial rearload, and then we'll be done shortly, commercial rearload, no rate increase in 2021. In 2022 and 23, they all would have 5% increases for all the scenarios. And then in the third scenario, a third 5% increase in 2024. With regard to roll off rates, we're proposing a change in how the roll off rates are structured and billed from a simplicity standpoint. And also to bring it more in line with what you typically see in the industry. And this is the way we do it for a lot, the vast majority of our clients, probably 90% of them. But we would recommend you put in place a flat delivery fee of $100 per month. A rental fee that's monthly. You incur it only if you keep the container for 30 days or greater of $100 per month. And then it's just a flat pull fee of $300 that increases $10 per year. And then disposal is handled separately. So you go across the scale. If I'm doing a demo at my home or a remodel. And I've got four tons of C and D, I pay for four tons and that's in addition to the fee. That's very standard. That way you pay the the user pays whatever that disposal fee is plus these fees. And finally, on street sweeping, if you go to table ES8 at the top of page five. Under scenario one, there would be a one time 70 cent increase in 2021. And then in scenarios two and three, there would be a 60 cent increase in 2022. Bottom line, what does this mean from a revenue recovery for the city's utility? If you look at table ES9, and I'll go through these quickly. This just shows that in, starting in for scenario one with the proposed rates. You would have an over recovery in 2021 of 103,000, would grow a little bit to 154,000. And then gradually goes down to 77,000 in 2024. Scenario two, if you look there, you have an over recovery in 2021 of 97,000. It grows to 240,000 in 2022 and then gradually goes down in 2024 to 140,000. And that's in a large part because that's when that bond issue gets issued in year four. Scenario three, if you look there, you have a slight under recovery in 2021 of 32,000. And then an over recovery in 2022 of 176,000. And then the next couple of years, a little over 100,000 per year. Okay? Those are the the three scenarios. Just a couple of policy recommendations. I've already discussed the second one on the change in the roll off structure. The one other thing I just wanted to mention to you, you do have in place a commercial cardboard roll off. Rate, but it's never been implemented as far as being charged to the customers. These are for the approximately 40 to 50 roll off containers that are placed around the city that collect cardboard. And then are pulled by the city and there's not a fee for those. And so it's just put out there that may be something you want to consider, but you'd want it to be a modest fee because you don't want them to. Stop collecting and diverting cardboard. That's everything I had. I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Yonkey. Trustees, questions on the executive summary?
Dave, does the, does the, the scenario three that includes the recycling staging facility, does it include any additional expenditures for? For transfer or is it only the dollar amount associated with the staging facility itself?
It includes everything. So the processing, the hauling, everything.
Okay, so that would be that increase that we were anticipating from the recycling.
Correct.
Force for a new recycling scenario that includes staging facility?
That is correct.
Okay. So just to clarify, we wouldn't expect additional rate increases associated with recycling? That's already been incorporated?
Exactly. And I'm glad you brought it up because when I was there in February, there were numbers that were bantered around of, you know, four and a half dollars or more, what have you. And so again, if you look at the 96 gallon scenario, you would go from 1828 to 2116. And so that's about a $2.90 increase. And I'd point out some of that, it's. It's not all because of the recycling staging facility. We also have some street sweepers that we're funding on a cash basis there. So we have those in there as well as some of the other equipment like and like the parking lot. So.
This is unrelated to the study that you're sharing with us, but I, as we look from an overall budget perspective. Based on the pandemic that everyone's enduring, are there opportunities that you've seen or talked with with other clients? For for funding, for grants, for additional revenue streams that might come from the solid waste utility?
From a grant standpoint right now, no, we're not seeing, you know, any of that. The the biggest thing we're seeing is that. They're continuing to focus on what they're doing. The biggest thing we've heard from our clients right now is that, and it depends if you're a July one, you're a July one fiscal year. Cities in New Mexico and Texas, I'm sorry, in New Mexico and Arizona typically are July one. And then Texas, a lot of them are October one. So we're working with folks in all those states. The one thing we are hearing is they are like, we will probably try to avoid a rate increase during this calendar year 2021. With everything that's going on, avoid that. That's probably the biggest takeaway I've seen. And I would say scenarios two and three would allow you to do that, to wait until fiscal year 2022.
Yeah, I mean, there definitely seems, I mean, that sensitivity to our community and the the things that individuals are enduring is definitely something I think that should be important and considered.
Yeah.
Um, Dave. Was there a, is there a sense of, you know, if there's no capital, if, you know, without a parking lot, without a recycling facility, just in terms of. Keeping up with the cost of of doing business, what is, what does that look like for?
Sure. So. If you were to, so you just brought up scenario four that I didn't model. So we did these three scenarios, but let me just look at. So we did these three scenarios, but let me just look at it. What I can tell you is, I mean, in scenario, if you take scenario two, if you were to take the debt service away or the cash funding, well, I can't tell you this. Hold on, let me just take a quick look here. Without, and I can look at this tomorrow, and I can give Chris a definitive answer tomorrow before the end of the day to get back to you. But if you were to, and don't hold me to this, I believe you could probably avoid, if you were to not do a parking lot, cash your debt, not do a recycling staging facility, any of those things, you could probably avoid a rate increase until probably '23 or '24. I will check that and send Chris an answer tomorrow.
Okay. I'm not suggesting that that's what we need to do. I think it's a
Sure.
good baseline for us to just to kind of get a sense of what the capital, what those additional capital expenditures add.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I think the comment you made, given, you know, inflation, you know, we do have to replace trucks no matter what, given, you know, the cost going up, I mean, the rates go up no matter what, right? I mean, there is still a rate
Yeah.
increase that you have to look at in order to continue to pay for the service, right? It's not something that just stays static and, you know, remains the same cost every year.
And I think the excellent thing, your utility is in really good shape financially, kind of going back to, I think, Christie's comment about the funding and being in a good position. If you look at this, even with that, you know, scenario three, take your, I'll call it your most expensive scenario with a parking lot debt-financed, a recycling staging facility, and the O and M. For the residential customers, you're looking at three 5% increases starting in a year from now, and then something similar when it comes to the commercial customers as well. And so from that standpoint, that you can keep it to that type of rate increase when you're, you know, having, doing some major capital, really speaks to being in a good financial shape, because we have some other clients that are having much bigger increases because they're, they've got to play catch-up.
That's good to hear. I mean, not that those guys have bigger increases, but that we're in good financial shape.
Yeah. No, you should be happy with that. And Chris, I'll get those numbers to you tomorrow, but it'd be very modest.
Chris, as you're looking, I know the city manager has asked all the departments to kind of look at what different budget scenarios would look like for their departments or for their staff. Are those, are some of those capital expenses, some of the things that you would look at from a big picture if you were asked to make reductions?
Well, yeah, I mean, those would be the top two to go. Yeah, that would be my opinion. That's where we'd start.
Which were the two?
With the parking lot and the staging facility.
Okay, yeah.
That would be the first two that we'd eliminate.
Okay, trustees, have further questions at this point? When do we, I mean, these are, you know, rates that wouldn't go into effect this year, maybe next year, probably the year later, you know, the year after. Well, what point do you have to make a decision about? Do we have to make a decision about which way we'd want to go with it?
And I'll let Chris talk to the timing, but you've got the clock ticking on Seager Creek, and if you're going to move your recyclables elsewhere, you need to start looking at this early in fiscal year 2021 to find the property and all that.
It just, it depends if we, you know, if we push forward for that recycling facility and stay in the recycling business, then, yeah, Dave's right, 2021, we got to be able to pull the trigger on something to get started.
So later this year?
Yes, sir.
Start talking about fiscal years, everybody gets confused. Maybe just me. All right, trustees, anything further?
In scenario three, when we talk about the recycling place, does that include land or just the building?
No, it's a great question. So in the, and that's why you wouldn't see it in the footnotes, in the report and everything, we clarified that in all the scenarios, it does not include land, so that is correct.
I just wanted to say thank you. I know this is kind of a culmination of a lot of work on Nugent's part and Chris on your part with staff. I think it's great not to be in our current situation, but to be in our current situation with all of this background and baseline information and understanding where we're at and being able to move forward, to make decisions for our community with just kind of that armor of information and data, I think is just so very important to us. And the work that you guys have done with our community and with staff, I really appreciate the work that you've done, the time that you've taken with us.
Okay. Well, thank you. And just so you know, because it's part of the plan, we've given Chris the collection piece, which was a major portion that Allison and I were working on, and we're completing the long-haul piece right now. Allison's doing the ordinance review, so our plan is to be having a draft of the entire document put together next month for Chris to start reviewing. So we're almost done, and thank you for everyone's patience.
All right. No further questions, trustees? Well, again, thank you, Dave. Thanks for being here tonight and waiting till the end of this meeting. Sorry we kept you to the last part, but
No problem.
You saved the best for the last, right?
Yeah, there you go. Have a good night.
All right, you too. Okay, trustees, there's nothing else on this agenda item. I don't know, Chris, I mean, you're not asking for a recommendation or an action at this point?
No, sir, no, I'm not. I just wanted to kind of give you each trustee the information to kind of digest and kind of sit on it for a little while and see what you think, and kind of let us know. And I'll find out more information from Dave on the question you asked, Mr. Mayor, and get that back to you guys.
Sure. Yeah, I think this is going to be a good sort of an issue for us to get some public input on, to, you know, hear what people think about the idea of rate increases and kind of what they look like. I mean, it's a lot easier with those numbers. I mean, you know, giving you the actual 96-gallon numbers and sort of seeing in dollars and cents rather than the percentages, you know, and I think that's going to be something we're going to have to figure out from the community, what they, what they think is the best way forward, so.
Just so you
We'll have those conversations.
Commercial side, and I think that includes the roll-off too, there hasn't been a rate increase since 2012 or 2013 on the commercial side.
Okay.
So it's been a long time on that side. Now, the residential, of course, 2017, there was a rate increase due to the recycling.
You know, that might be a good piece of information if you can find, you know, historically over the last five to six years or something, just on both of those, maybe going back to that last rate increase on the commercial side, just to see what the numbers have looked like, just to kind of help give it some perspective.
Okay.
With, you know, with recycling added, and it certainly skews what that looks like residentially, but it'd still be good to kind of have that perspective. I wrote a lot of notes down here, so I think I'm good. Anything else, trustees, on this item?
I really appreciate the report, because I've been in on a couple of rate studies over these seven, eight years, and I can't always understand them as well. This was a nice one.
They do a good job.
All right. Well, we'll drop down to item six, reports from offices and boards. Anyone, Mr. Dorman, any reports? No, Mr. McNichol?
No items.
Trustees, anything further? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the State Utilities Authority meeting. Teresa, can you call the roll?
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jalowski?
Yes.
With the vote of five to zero, the Utilities Authority is now adjourned. Thank you all for being here this evening. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
Thank you, you too.
Night, guys.